Yeah, Thursday, she's gonna be two months old. This is her. I know. And she's. I think it's because she's got a big sister. Oh, yeah. Oh, sure. Sometimes I come up with words. But she speaks in sentences. Oh, she probably did. Always in front of like the grocery store.
Let's do this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Been moving seconded to approve the agenda, on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Reports, please.
You have a copy of the police report in your packets.
Player report.
You have a copy of the player report in your packet.
Okay, county commissioner is not here, if he shows up.
He actually gave us a written report this month that's in your packet.
Okay, I didn't get my packet early.
No, he did that at the last minute this afternoon, so he had to report to me. So he gave us a written report in the packet.
Planning commission.
Tina, I wasn't at the meeting.
You weren't there, but they had nothing on their agenda.
DDA, everything went pretty good, we introduced the two new members and they kinda said yes. Dan spoke up and said he would take over as chairman for a while. Dave said he'd stay as co-chairman then, so. I don't, do we have to put that to a vote too?
No, they appoint their own.
And they commented about the Chris with decorations and a little bit. I can't remember anything else. Little but historical building, still doing some maintenance.
You guys want to start moving forward with park stuff in the spring, I think, at all?
Right.
They're hoping to have some costs for the pavilion by February, I think you said?
Yeah. That's kind of the windows. Maybe get maybe a condevo going or something, you know, pavilion. Attorney report, probably everything down below.
I have a couple items I want to address that are outside of that. At last month's meeting, there were two issues raised, or I should say. One issue was raised about some comments and minutes about parking in Harmer Park. We went back, and you know the letter that I sent to the council? We went back and looked really carefully at both deeds. One deed is for the main Harmer Park section. And that one was limited to be used for purposes of public park, a recreation area for the use of citizens, and for no other private, commercial, industrial, residential, governmental use. It didn't really have a specific restriction dealing with parking, but we know from the language that was used and from the owners' comments themselves, they were adamant that the park not be used as overflow parking for adjoining businesses. But we don't see anything that would prohibit in that, with that property, parking for when it was being, when it was being used for park purposes, you know, to support a park purpose. The other one had a specific, the property to the south of it had a specific restriction that said it shall only be used for park purposes in order to support the park. It had a specific definition of what that meant. And they said it included, but is not limited to any actions, building, facilities, improvements, regulations, or anything else to entertain, provide shelter, or otherwise provide services for park attendees. Again, those folks were equally adamant that that property not be used for overflow parking for commercial businesses nearby. But we don't see anything either of the restrictions that would prohibit parking for use of park purposes, not, not commercial purposes. We know if you read the minutes, the context of that was really a discussion of whether or not they can, commercial businesses could use those properties for that. And we don't believe they can, but we don't believe that we keep the village from allowing folks to park there when it's being reused for park purposes. The second item that's been raised since the meeting, I had made some reference that there was a Sixth Circuit opinion dealing with whether or not a public official on a private Facebook site could block someone's use of it. The Sixth Circuit case dealt with the city manager, Fort Huron, who blocked someone's use. And the court upheld that as not being state action and not subject to liability. At the time, I mistakenly indicated that the Supreme Court had not yet granted a review. They have, but we need to understand something, that when the US Supreme Court agrees to hear a case, it does not change the binding effect of a lower court decision, unless the court goes on and orders that the case is vacated until they make their ruling. They did not do that in this case. So my opinion is still the way it was because that court decision is still in effect. The suggestion that just because the US Supreme Court agrees to review the case, somehow changes the ruling that was reached by the Sixth Circuit is not really accurate. My legal opinion about what the state of law was at the time is still remains as it is. It is, I reviewed the oral arguments in the case, there were two. There's one case out of the Ninth Circuit in California, and one case in the Sixth Circuit. There's hundreds of pages of oral argument. It is not possible to predict how this court is going to come down on this case, and who knows what tests they will establish. So. One thing you learn as lawyers about oral arguments, the judges ask questions sometimes just to be a devil's advocate, and they want to hear your answer to certain things. It's a very dangerous exercise to try to look at what they say during an oral argument and try to predict what they're actually going to rule in the case. So we'll find out by probably the end of June, what they're gonna rule. But the rest of my items on the water extension are, I'll deal with down below.
Uh, council communications.
Oh, yeah, it's not really a parade, they're just gonna go caroling. They do have a route, the fire department, sorry, I guess, I forgot since Dan's not here to do his report.
I talked to regular parade, it's gonna be two.
Oh, the with, Lon Golling, Waskel's? I can't pronounce it. The Christmas parade, the horse parade.
Right.
Yes, they are, the chamber is having their horse parade.
Well, Thursday's the caroling.
Right, but he's talking about Sunday's the horse parade. Yes, sorry about that. No, sorry, December 2nd.
That's Saturday.
Okay, December 3rd. I don't have my calendar.
What's the 30th, they're gonna, they're meeting in the park, right?
Yep, and they're gonna go caroling.
Well, I was kind of questioned by a property owner. It's just something to think about, and maybe we can discuss it some next meeting, but it's Rick Shankle, the property that they own up in the rear road bed, the stone multiple. He's wondering what the board would think about his chances of getting a zoning or a variance to put storage units in, which don't need a subdeck hook up, which we don't have for him. He didn't know if it'd be feasible for him to do it, or if it was something we even wanted to see in the village. Said, why don't you throw it out, let them think about it?
It'd be hidden though.
No.
Wouldn't see much of it. But then he'd have to improve.
Well, he, he knows that, that's all in the agreement to use the property.
Right.
So where would they access the property?
The rear road bed.
Between your adhesion.
We give him an easement quite a few years ago, but he has to asphalt it and upgrade it, you know, to his expense.
It's landlocked right here.
It's got upgraded to a county road spec, correct?
Obviously, we can't prejudge what he might get out of a planning commission.
Right.
Right. He, he just wanted to know what council kind of, you know. And I told him, well, I'll bring it up, but I want to give him a little bit of time to think about it. You know, before he starts pursuing, spending money, you know, if it's halfway feasible or not, you know.
If it's just site plan review and not a zoning change, then the village council doesn't actually vote on it at all.
Right. I don't think, I think it would be a zoning change, I don't think it can be a variance from a multiple use to a storage unit use.
Wasn't it gonna be like residential?
Yeah, multiple residential.
Yeah, multiple.
Up to twelve units, as I recall.
Multiple, right.
Back originally when we give them the easement and everything, they were talking about putting like a rest home or senior citizen kind of like. Which they had enough other property to the north to put in their own subdeck and field. That got kind of blown out of the water a couple times, and now building costs are so high and nobody wants to do that, I guess, no. But. Nothing we gotta even discuss too much tonight, I guess, just think about it. I told him I'd bring it up. I said, just, just 'cause council says alright, that doesn't mean that it would, you know, that's what the vote's gonna be, you know, it's just, you've still got the option of going through all the hoops. So move down to consent agenda. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Been moving seconded to approve the consent agenda, on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
I abstain.
Abstain. Public time.
So I think it's interesting that you said that the Harmer Park parking shouldn't be used for commercial purposes, and in the context of those meeting minutes, which I, I gave to you all, it was actually the rail trail that they were talking about and having, so it would have been for recreational purposes parking. And I also just wanted to say, we're gonna split hairs that way. That is a .4 acre park, .4 acres, and it gets filled up with vehicles. And again, it makes it unsafe for me, it makes it unsafe for my niece, it makes it unsafe for a bunch of people who won't even speak up because they know what happens around here, and how much blowback they will get for saying anything. And you're gonna split hairs on that tiny little park that is completely unsafe for how it is used on those nights. Also gonna split hairs on the social media thing because the, the exact circumstances of that case and how you want to apply it, Tina's case is actually quite different than that, and again, it is more similar to, to other cases out there. And speaking of that, I've got some more comments that I printed out. Because I think it's just not sinking in how, when you work in local government, how you should conduct yourself on social media. And so I found one from about a year and some months ago. Some people are asking for Realtor in Metamore, Michigan group. And we got Tina and Janet speaking up and saying, go for Nick Holden, who works here. I, I'm trying to wrap my mind around how, just how conflicted that is, it's incredibly conflicted. Re- recommending someone who works for the same government entity as you in a business purpose. And also, I just want to mention, he's a Realtor and I get that he gets calls. Is he paid by the hour by the village here? So is he clocking out when he's getting those calls?
If he's gonna take a lengthy call, he does write out on the time clock.
Okay, good, that's good to know, just because like, I've seen him standing on the phone, and I run in, Aaron, and come back, and he is still standing on the phone, so it's good to know. I mean, and I've had jobs where I did that legitimately, and if the work just has to be done in the course of a day. So just good to know. So I found one in June, somebody was asking, where does the trail behind the white horse go to? And Janet said, it is a service drive to DPW Barn. I mean, it serves as a service drive to the DPW Barn, that was a very expensive service drive. Like, why would you just have that as a service drive when you have a perfectly good service drive that is much quicker? And again, what you say to the public about these things matters. Because you said that, and then you excluded, oh, and it can be used for recreation, because people use it for recreation. Like, you haven't decided, you've left it up in the air, we want it for our service drive, but people are asking for trails all the time around here, and it's like you're preventing them from knowing that they can use it. I want to say also, Janet posted in Metamore, Michigan, and I didn't see this posted anywhere else. It was not posted on the village page, it wasn't posted in any of the other groups. So when the concert got canceled this summer on August 17th, she posted it in there. Nowhere else, nowhere else that I could see was that posted information. So like, you're posting official stuff about an event happening here that is paid for with tax money, but I can't see it, right? I have to discover it by, by driving up. There was an issue recently with somebody's dog barking a whole bunch in the village here. And Janet saying, well, someone should call the police about that, you work for the village. And when it's a safety issue, or, or like a, a, a thing where someone is vulnerable, or an animal is vulnerable, you may have a responsibility. And by, again, posting it in this group where Tina is admin, it just gets super complicated. When you had to learn this stuff like I did at length in grad school. Here's another one where Tina was posting official information, there was a power outage, and she's officially posting what she talked to DTE about. So I think we're just like not getting it, and again, you wanted to split hairs.
Did I post, did I find out information on my public page?
This was from your private account, but you're posting it about the village, about things that you were doing on your job in the village. So. I also just want to mention that apparently we don't have an outdoor assembly ordinance here in the village, but the township has one. So read through it and see that they have requirements for things that we just don't abide by here. Such as, you know, like fire lanes into the, the park here, when all the villages, all the vehicles are blocking it. So for now, thank you.
Some finished business.
Nothing new on the bathroom.
The settlement group did come back with a revised, proposed agreement. I'm not gonna get too much into the weeds of the substance changes that they have. I'll just cover those really quickly. The village talked about the need to put a backflop preventer in like a vault near the place where the hookup would take place. And they wanted to set it up so that the village actually paid for any of the maintenance that were feared on that. Tina's comment was, I thought this was supposed to be without cost to us, so just something to think about. They also added some extra language, that the village would have to warrant that the potable water it provides shall meet all applicable water quality standards and criteria for public potable water systems. I'm not overly troubled by that, because we couldn't legally provide potable water for people for consumption unless you did comply with those, so I'm not overly concerned about that. And then they want us to share any data we had on the testing that we did, which is probably smart.
Our testing is monthly.
They do some testing daily, then some monthly, they do some for a year.
It just says if we do testing, we need to give them the data on it, so they know what it is that they're.
They know it's been done.
So I, I don't have trouble with that. And of course, not surprisingly, they switched our $500,000 hookup fee back to the $50,000 hookup fee. So I'm just giving you the quick overview. The, the thing that's really on the table tonight is, we said at the last conference call we had with them, you haven't given us, you said you were gonna give us the specs of the revised, whatever, and what it means. And so they gave us more specifications. And Row Engineering said, well, we haven't reviewed, we haven't done an analysis based on these new specifications, and we need to do so. It's also about the time where the DEQ wants us to do an updated water study. So Row came back, and I think there's a, there's a proposed agreement in your package from Row, and it's on the agenda to, to do the water reliability study and authorize Row to do that. I, one suggestion I have is that you think about, if you approve that, that you do it subject to the settlement group depositing the necessary money to the.
The funds should be here this week.
Yeah.
I've already sold them.
Sounds good. So, you know, I, I'm not gonna commit that that's gonna change anybody's mind, because I still think there are risks with the way they're doing the system. But we'll at least have more information, more reliable information about what our engineers sees as the potential risks of the system the way they revised it, so.
After we get along, because they still have to flag the statement.
Yeah, and I'm not sure they've done that yet. Yeah, they're not telling us.
As far as I know, they haven't.
I think they may have had some discussions, but I think they're still at the planning stage. And so this thing is a ways off. And all, all you have to do is read the newspaper clippings over the last two years over the Flint water crisis. And if that doesn't make you a little nervous about taking down the responsibility of providing water to people, especially, especially water where it's going out into the township and, you know, potentially, essentially getting up in the dead ends or we need to have good information from our engineer, they need to pay for that. And then we'll come back and I'll discuss the rest of the schemes to see whether we're gonna accept what they propose.
Do we even know yet, though, if the DEQ and health department are gonna let them pull it down? Line in. I mean, we could be going through all this, and it's just gonna, once they get ready to do something.
I, I understand that, and as long as they're paying the freight along the way, then I guess I can be patient along the way. If they're paying for the engineering analysis and the expert fees, you're right, they still have to convince those folks, and they're not big fans of private systems, but they're the engineers, I'm not.
I understand that it's bringing it on even longer for the residents up there.
Oh, they're, they're nothing but frustrated.
I know.
I mean, we've been at it, what, five, six years now? You know, and sure, it's not costing the village nothing, and we're making, you know, our attorney's making sure of that, and Row, but.
Well, it seems like they just, they put enough barriers in place so nothing happens.
Yeah.
They put more brakes on it than they do go.
Do we have a time limit that we can tell them, like, we want this resolved by such and such date when we're done?
Thinking, you know, if we go ahead and say what we want to do this time.
Like after the reliability setting comes back?
Can we say, alright, six months from now, if we don't have something done, we're gonna bring it back to the council, and they can vote on taking our offer right off the table.
I'd like to see us wait till next month's meeting to make that decision, because I don't know how long it's gonna take Row to get the engineering water study back to us.
At least after that, I'm.
It should be a good time of year for them to do it, I'm assuming that work slows down a little bit.
Do we need to act on any of things for you right now on any of that?
Well, you're, you're gonna come back to the water reliability study later on.
New business. 2024 meeting schedule?
Well, I can use, you have a copy of the schedule, same thing, those meetings, third Monday of every month at 7 o'clock. DDA first Tuesday at noon, and planning commission first Tuesday at 7:00. The DDA does automatically cancel their January meeting, they made a motion for that years ago. They may change their July 2nd meeting, just because of being right before the holiday. And planning commission did change, they did do that at their last meeting, they did cancel their July meeting, so. That's it.
Amendment 23, 24 budget.
Well, I'm trying to get better and not do these at, at the end of the fiscal year, and I'm trying to keep up on them throughout the year. So when we do have projected costs that look like they're gonna come above our budgeted amount, the most substantial one you'll notice is the water fund, the repairs. It went from $8,000 to $70,000, that's because of repairs to the well that we did already approve. But we had to have that, the money budgeted for that, so I have to put that in the budget. Other than that, just tweaking it here and there, no other real huge changes. I mean, taxes income, we had $230,000 budgeted, but it came in, we ended up getting like $248,000. I'm just trying to keep it nice and clean for our auditors.
Okay, so you, you amend the budget?
Correct, to approve the resolution to amend the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the budget.
Moving seconded to amend the 2023, 2024 budget.
I'll do a roll call vote, Clark?
Yes.
Morris?
Yeah.
Walker?
Yeah.
Suzie Clark?
Yeah.
Spreen?
Yeah.
Kincaid?
Yeah.
Okay. Water reliability.
So we did already approve a few months back to do the water reliability study through Row. We didn't have anything included as far as the additions that they need for the water infrastructure holding. So they gave us a quote on what the additional cost would be from their original one, which is $5,100. I have reached out to Diane McCloslin from the Engineering Settlement Company. I should have a check in our hand this week for $10,000, that's kind of their go-to. They give us over and above what we need for their escrow fund. I mean, it sits there, we have a spreadsheet, as bills come in, it gets paid out of that. Basically, I'm looking at our motion to approve Row's additional quote. Pending, we get the check in hand. Yes. They've, they've always been pretty good about it, you know, anytime attorney fees starts to get low, I let them know, they send me that's a check, but I come straight from their bank. So pending the receipt of that check, though, I won't let Row know that they can go ahead with the work until we receive that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Been moving seconded to approve Row's water reliability study as soon as we get the check from the settlement party. Paper say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? No extensions?
No.
Okay, public time again.
So I just wanted to make sure it was clear too, that when Mr. Denny's said that, said last meeting, that the Supreme Court hadn't agreed to take up that case, they had in April. So that was quite a misspeak, just, just FYI. So I was going through for another reason, I was going through a bunch of the township meeting minutes, primarily for these, it's the, the planning commission. And I came across something that I found really interesting. Because we've had that 40 acre park out there sitting for 10 years now, right? No signs, a lot of people, the, the police were still telling people that it is private property. A lot of people who live around the park were telling people it's private property and they can't use it. Some people believe the Lions own it. And again, there's still no sign, which just blows my mind. Because back in 2000, 2001, people were working their tails off to try to get some land for a park. And I'll pass this around so you can see it, but it talks about how, when it comes to parks and recreation, Metamore is one of the lowest in the state and what's available to folks here. It says Metamore is lax when it comes to family recreation, all we have is Harmer Park and the Lions Hall. He said that is something that really needs to be looked into. Vice Chair Herrick said that it is noted. Vice Chair Herrick said that it is noted that the recommendation for the population acres per 1,000, they're kind of unclear about this. Playgrounds, playfield, and community parks is not met here. It was recommended by the consultant to have five acres of playground, the service radius, and then like another 40 acre park, so now we have that 40 acre park, and it's been sitting there for 10 years. And again, that is a $350,000 asset when it was bought, I'm sure it's worth a whole lot more now, just not being used and people not knowing it. There were groups, these people met, when I went through these minutes, months and months and months, people were looking for land, they were trying to raise money, they were trying to think of how we can get this, and again, it's there now. And I hear you say that there's gonna be some development next year? Well, I've heard that a lot of times before, first of all, but there's no reason not to put a sign out there right now and say, this is a park and this is what it can be used So I wanted to note that our renters consider residents here. Can our renters consider residents?
Yes.
Okay, so, but when you send out a survey, it goes in a tax bill. Information also goes out in water bills, things like that, and so people like me, I am a renter, don't get it. But just so you guys know, I have.
Do you give your landlord copies to give to all the tenants down there?
Okay, well, then he's not doing it. But there are probably other renters out here who aren't getting that information either, and there's actually someone who owns a house here, but his renter gets the water bill, and so he didn't get the notice that you were looking for folks for this council, because his tenant got to sit. So it seems to me that we could just try.
He wouldn't be eligible anyways if he didn't live. I'm sorry, I'm just telling you, if he's not a resident in the village, he wouldn't be eligible for the council.
Okay, but maybe he knows somebody else who is, okay?
How would the village know who a tenant was?
Oh, they they can find out, they can find out, but also, they could make sure, they could call the landlords, especially the big ones, and say, hey. But also, you could put it on social media, that's a great use of the social media page, it really is. And say, hey, we got the survey, you can come pick it up if your landlord hasn't done it.
What survey are you referring to?
The the parks one that is in here, that a whole bunch of stuff was based on.
The one that Row did, I didn't do, the engineering company did that, we didn't.
Okay, then you work with the engineering company to make sure that people get it, okay? But just so everybody is clear, because sometimes people have invent renters, I get the homes to tax credit when I do my taxes, because my landlord writes the check, but he gets the money from me. I pay the water bill, but he writes the check, okay? The money comes from me, so we do contribute to the economy, we are residents here, we count. I also wanted to, before the last meeting, I heard some folks talking about the DNR grant and what happened with that and why didn't go for it, and Tina had said there wasn't enough time. And I just want to say that for the record, I hope the hesitation in like applying for DNR grants, and maybe we aren't looking for them enough, because they will say that you can't have motorized transportation, other than mobility devices, if you get a DNR grant. So that is, you know, I just, let's just make sure that we are we are trying for those things. I also want to note that Chief Mallett has never, like, in all the meetings where we've brought up, and not just me, but multiple people have brought up safety issues around here and policing issues around here, Chief Mallett has never been brought in to answer questions. We haven't had a police officer in a while, I mean, like, in like more than a year of meetings, a year and a half of meetings, we can't just do that, just can't have him come? So I I just, I wish that we could be better people here, particularly with this park, particularly with the social media, because even a lawyer cannot tell you, again, the ethics, he can just tell you, maybe you can get away with this, maybe you can't, maybe the supplies, maybe you can't. But the ethics of you not listening to me about that being an ADA violation out there, not not just for me, and just for my niece, but for a bunch of other people, it's just so offensive. All those people have to do, they want to drive their vehicles, those are illegal now, they weren't legal before, is park them in parking, and there's almost always a bunch of parking spaces available on those days. And maybe that land that that guy's trying to sell over there, if we need parking in here, and apparently we do, maybe you buy it and make that more of a parking lot. Maybe we think about that, we think ahead. All right? Thank you.
Nothing else, I'll entertain one more motion.
I'll second.
Then move in second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
But there was no agenda out today.
There used to be a big sign down there to FYI.
I apologize.
That confused people more.
But it got blown down and buttoned up.
I remember exactly when it happened, that confused people more, you get that?
Right.
They thought it hadn't been bought yet, and they'd already been bought for years.